Good evening, I'd like to call to order the July 10th meeting of the Town Council Committee of the Hall. And all councilors are here except for Councillor Atwater, who is out of town this week. Calendar Communications. Councillor Baumgartner.
So I attended the July 4th parade. It was a very lovely parade. It was great to see so many folks, especially our military community, participate. So our things goes to sailors at the subbase, of course, and certainly the children who certainly could have taken the day off and not participated. But they went and ate a lot of candy, so we ended up running out, which is, I guess, good news. So that's all I have to report.
Councillor Parker.
I also attended the Fourth of July Parade, well-attended, and it was nice to see everyone out, even though it was very, very hot.
Councillor Franco.
I attended the Fourth of July Parade as well, and I attended the Fire Chief Tompkins swearing-in ceremony at Groton City with Juliette. I received communications from Citizens Gretchen Schabrinie and from Mr. Fitzgerald, and I also spoke with Chief Fisaro this week.
Councillor Heath.
I also attended the July 4th Parade. It was a lot of fun. Note to self, buy more candy next year. Or buy some, because, let's see, that's all.
Councillor Ober.
As well, I enjoyed the parade. I've had a wonderful driver, and it's the only way to be in a parade. I want to congratulate Jerry Locken, though. Jerry, for a long time, has wanted the parade to start in a different area, which it did this year. It started down by Fort Hill Homes, and I think because of that, we had a much larger turnout for the parade. So I gotta say Jerry was correct, and I wanted to thank the Police Department, and I wanted to thank the Recreation Department. They all did a great, great job.
Councillor Schmidt.
No report.
Councillors Apari.
I did a ride-along with a Groton ambulance last week. I was very impressed, and this is sincere, truthful, I was very impressed with the competence, the professionalism, and the compassion shown by the members of the crew I rode with. The only thing I would suggest is that we take up a collection to buy springs and shock absorbers for the ambulances. But they were a fine crew, and I think we should be happy we have them.
Thank you. I as well attended the parade, and I wanted to thank Jerry Locken as well. He did a fine job organizing, very, very well-run, like clockwork. And I also attended the reception at the subbase at the Nautilus Museum, it was very nice, for the 40th anniversary of the crew of the USS Groton. So it was wonderful to see so many of the crew back in town with their families, and they had a very nice gathering the whole weekend. There was a reception, and there was a banquet on Saturday night, and for some of the families, it was their first time back. And so we invited them to come back once the sale is in place, and one of them actually volunteered to do some kind of etching and offered to make it available for sale to Jim Streeter, so, working on some ideas. So it worked, it went very well. All right, approval of minutes.
So I will make motion to approve the Committee of the Hall minutes of June 26, 2018.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Saperi. Is there discussion on the minutes? I wanted to add something. Do you have something, Councillors Apari?
I had something, but let me see if I can... Go ahead.
Under 5B, on page four, and thank you, by the way, to Ms. Bresnan for paginating the packet. I don't know if anyone else noticed that?
We did, we did.
Simple things make people happy. Thank you very much. Under 5B on page four. It seems like the focus in the minutes was the actuarial assumption, and there's not much discussion there about the colas. I just wanted it to be noted that the council did also discuss the colas rather than just Mr. Cecilia providing an analysis of that, because that is something that I think is important for people to know. And then there's a typo on page nine. And now I can't find it. Now I can't find it, I'm sorry.
It's a bit out there.
Oh, reimburse, it's actually on page eight. In the motion at the bottom, it's reimburse 5SC. Yeah. Councillors Apari, did you come up with yours?
I was talking about a typo also.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so all those in favor of approving the minutes of June 26, 28, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so move unanimously, 8-0-0. All right, so we're onto new business. Item 5A, 2018-55 Economic Development Assistance Fund Grant for 90 Leonard Drive. Councillor Parker, please.
Am I reading just the alternatives?
We should read the...
The motion.
We should read the motion, and then we can discuss, and then at the end. Or would you like... Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
To recommend a resolution approving the Economic Assistance Fund grant award of $15,625 to CrossFit... How do you say it? Ingus?
Ingus.
Ingus. For pre-development costs, gas and electrical connection, and roadway repair infrastructure costs at 90 Leonard Drive to be paid on a reimbursement basis after posting a sign indicating the project was supported by the Town of Groton Economic Assistance Fund, satisfying utility and road specifications and providing proof of payment to the contractor.
Can I still move?
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Heath. So we have Mr. Bronk with us this evening to discuss it, and then at the end, he's going to be looking for us to give him some guidance, and there are two alternatives on page 12, do nothing, or the second alternative is, I believe, the one that they are recommending. That's all you.
Thank you. I do have a handout tonight. I have some minor edits to the referral, and also attached is a copy of the site plan that indicates the utilities that are being improved. What I did is, I actually put the changes, the edits, and tracked change, so you can see the edits in red and the text that is struck to be removed. Ultimately, it doesn't change the numbers, and the recommendation still stands. The difference pertained to how full value for property is derived, and also assessment is calculated with a 70 percent ratio. Mary Gardner and I talked today, and I just wanted to clarify how those numbers were calculated.
Can I, just to clarify, so in place of the 550, we have the new red that's underlined, which indicates it's 631,000.
The 631,300 is the full valuation post-improvement. And then from that number, in order to calculate assessed value, 7, a .7 ratio is applied to that number to get the assessed value. Why that's significant is that the Economic Assistance Fund guidelines refer to assessed value estimates after the improvement. So we need to get to that number and figuring out whether or not they're asking for too much money or not.
Okay, thank you.
So overall, the Economic Assistance Fund has been fairly active this year. It wasn't that long ago I was here and dealt with the 10 Fort Hill Road property, and this particular request deals with 90 Leonard Drive. And then also, coincidentally, I met with another prospect today in Mystic, who is interested in possibly relocating, and there'll be some exterior infrastructure improvements as well. So I just want to point out that we're seeing an uptick in activity and requests, and the fact that we have this local Economic Assistance Fund is pretty well-received by the business community. It's not a common thing that most municipalities have. Specific to this request, the applicant, Andrew Purpich, who is the owner of CrossFit Ingus, it's an existing business in Groton, towards the end of Leonard Drive, which is the airport industrial park. He is currently leasing his spot, and due to the success, he desires to expand, relocate, and own his own property. It also would be, obviously, on Leonard Drive. And as you enter Leonard Drive, this is the lot that would be, it's an undeveloped lot, it's just grassed. It's about the second lot on the right, as you're entering Leonard Drive. There's a map included in the packet I just handed you that provides somewhat of an overview of the property. And the two main elements that we're looking to assist with would be the gas lateral extension and also the electric extension. If you'll note, it actually comes from the roadway, the public roadway, and on to the private property. The other utilities in the area already exist, and they stub up to the property, such as the sanitary, the fire, and also the domestic water. So as we looked at this request over time, we really focused on where we could make a difference where the utilities or the infrastructure didn't exist at the property itself. The proposed building's about a 10,000-square-foot building that obviously will house this health facility. It is a CrossFit facility, but it's larger than that. It actually does contain some offices, small offices, that would be supporting the CrossFit. There'll be a chiropractic office. I think there was mentioned possibly a nutritionist as well. So complementary businesses and offices would be housed within this main health facility. The applicant is proposing to create three to five new jobs. Initially, as you can see on the application, the request was 51,000. That's fairly typical for an applicant to ask for more than what they're actually going to receive, and then there's a give-and-take back and forth. But the initial $51,000 request is less than 1 percent of the total project cost, total project cost being $800,000 for construction. We've been in discussions with this applicant since December 2017. It's also common that there's this give-and-take. It takes some time for us to refine the application. We will work with our economic EDC Subcommittee that focuses on these as well, and we kind of strategize what we think is a reasonable request. And that brought us to the gas and electric extension, and also some of the right-of-way improvements that would be needed corresponding to that. The taxes on the property today in its vacant form are $5,800, and the taxes, as estimated through our calculations, post-improvement, will be roughly $13,000. So that's a significant increase, and the numbers you can see that we added today in red show the investment that will be made on the property. We did also make one slight modification to the resolution. The handout I just provided you is the modified. In the second whereas, first line, we added the word "utility" in front of installation. I think the prior resolution referenced sewer installation, and that was incorrect. So again, because of the gas and the electric, what we're really looking to do is focus on the gas and electric utilities.
Excuse me, did, was there an extra copy for...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So the changes to the referral and the changes to the resolution don't really change the final outcome with our tax estimates, nor does it change our recommendation, which is basically the $15,625 that includes the infrastructure costs for sewer and electric, plus an additional $5,000 for pre-development costs, given that it's a vacant piece of property. So obviously, our recommendation is for that award. The Economic Development Commission has also endorsed this recommendation.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Bronk? Councillor Ober, and then Saperi.
Where are they presently?
They're at the end of Leonard Drive, on the left-hand side, maybe two-thirds of the way down.
How big a building is that?
That they're in today? I don't have that estimate. It's much smaller than this.
Yeah.
Very good.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Councillor Apari.
You're calling this the Economic Assistance Fund. Isn't it the Economic Development Assistance Fund?
That used to be a term we used previously. When we modified the guidelines, we basically called the fund Economic Assistance Fund.
Because it implies, the Economic Assistance Fund implies that we could be assisting economic issues that are not for economic development, businesses that need economic assistance with the latest inventory, for instance.
That's, someone may have that confusion. What we did two years ago is we actually created a guidelines document. People adhere to this when they apply.
I think this is a worthwhile thing to do, and I think we should support it.
Thank you.
Councillor Heath.
Just a question on $15,625, is that the right number? Is there any reason to believe it would happen? They would go forward with their development. If we didn't approve it, or we approved a lower number, why is that the right number?
Well, we kind of balance our liability investment versus theirs. In all honesty, it's not a perfect science, it's more of an art, and there's a lot of conversations back and forth. As I said, it's somewhat of a negotiation of sorts, where they kind of go high, they want to see how much we're going to give them, whereas we'll push back, like the utilities. The water sewer, it's already stubbed to the property. We didn't feel inclined to use public money to extend it further, whereas the gas and the electric didn't go to the property line, so we thought that was a better target. We also knew they had some pre-development costs because it's vacant land, so we were inclined to include some pre-development money. And we are in conversations with them throughout that, and most, actually all the developers we've dealt with have been, they've been appreciative of what we can do. I don't think I've had any yet that say, "I've got to have more, otherwise this is never going to happen." They seem to appreciate that the town is partnering with them on some of the infrastructure.
So it looks like we'll, this is going to be, the business is going to pay out first, and then we will reimburse after?
Yes.
And we'll recoup our reinvestment within two years in the increased tax revenue?
Does that sound right? Actually, definitely within two years, actually less than that.
And how much is, how much do we have in the Economic Assistance Fund now? I can't remember. Are we at about $300,000?
No, we, I don't have an exact number, but it's more around $500,000.
So this isn't going to make a huge dent?
It won't make that much of a difference.
We took some of it last week.
Councillor Baumgartner.
Now, the natural gas connection, what system is it tied in? And would it, is there an existing natural gas line there currently?
Yes. Yeah, in the site plan, I highlighted the utilities. So the pink is the gas line. So you can see on the far left, they would be taking it from this point here and coming across the roadway and then straight to the building.
And do most of the businesses along Leonard Drive utilize the existing natural gas line?
I believe so, yeah.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Bronk? No, seeing none. He's looking for direction, so is there any objection to Alternative 2? All those in favor of Alternative 2? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So in favor, 8-0, opposed, 0 abstaining. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to 5B, filling vacant positions. And this is on page 15. Councillor Franco.
Make your motion to recommend a resolution adopting the re-establishment of the hiring justification policy.
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Parker, and I believe Mr. Burt, are you going to handle this, or is Mr. Zagami joining us?
I will.
Okay.
The current policy ran out, or the current resolution set the policy to June 30th, 2018. So from feedback I've received from council members, I'm putting it back out to reinstate the policy or keep the policy going. I think it's good to have, you know, it's all our goals to streamline things and make sure things are operating as efficiently as possible, and I support continuing the policy.
Is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Burt? Councillor Ober.
Would this affect in any other way the temporary lists we have of people that you're hoping to, modification to the part-time seasonal pay plan?
No, it doesn't affect anything else. Just any change in position would continue to come through here for permission to fill.
Okay, thank you.
You don't feel that this policy slows down filling necessary positions?
No, since we do it where, even at the cows, you can authorize to move forward. No, it's been fine.
Any other discussion? So the two alternatives are to adopt the resolution, re-establishing the hiring justification policy or do nothing. All those in favor of adopting the resolution re-establishing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so move unanimously. Nuclear Safety Grant, 5C, this is on page 17. And Chief Fisaro is here with us this evening. Councillor Heath, please.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to authorize the Police Department to accept the Nuclear Safety Grant in the amount of $63,246. I simply...
Second.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Baumgartner. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
Would you like to tell us about the grant, please?
Sure. As you know, we've undertaken a project that was adopted by CIP this year regarding our radio system. As part of that radio system, we're required to create some interfaces between our existing equipment and the new radio system that we're going to. This grant is residual money that was left over from the Nuclear Emergency Safety Program, which is basically a grant that funds communities in the emergency planning zone around Millstone, of which we are one. Essentially, at the end of the year, once all the grants have been distributed, DEMIS, the Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, recalls the remaining funds that have not been used or have not been expended, and allows for members of that EPZ and host communities to go and apply for the residual funds or the leftover funds. Understanding that was coming about, I did forward a request to DEMIS to consider funding a project that we have to interface with the state radio system. Back in May, we did get indications, or got an award from the state of Connecticut, that they would fund this. It's a one-time grant. It, I think we're pretty fortunate to have had, to have received this because it's a small pool of money, and we got a substantial amount of that money. And the reason I'm told we did is because it really fits nicely into what they're looking for, which is interoperability, and it kind of hit all the marks that they were looking for to use this money for. So I highly recommend that we take advantage of this. It's something that we have to do either way, and again, the fund is what's paying for this part of the project.
Councillors Apari.
Is this something we've already budgeted for when we approved the 1 million-plus?
No, it is not.
But it was something we had to do, and we knew had to do it.
It is, it is something we have to do, yes.
But we knew it when we approved that, and we hadn't funded it at that time.
It's a project, we need to do this either way, and the money, you know, I could get into specifics of what we need that entire money for.
Yeah.
Obviously, the $807,000 I discussed with the council and the RTM did not cover this cost, but we knew there were going to be extra costs, and we did indicate that to the council and the RTM at the time to include stuff that we just don't see at this point. You know, when we get into the project, there may be some expenditures we have to make in addition to this, but we also have to buy portable radios, mobiles, things of that nature. So this is money that we would have had to have spent, yes?
Okay.
So just to clarify, so then this was not an item that was budgeted for in the budget we just passed? This is an additional item that we're going to be able to take care of now, that you're able to find the grant money?
Correct.
Okay. Did you want to talk?
I was just going to mention, it wasn't on the radar at the time. We knew there'd be some other things, but as soon as we knew about this, then he applied for the grant, but he didn't knowingly not put it into the amount earlier.
Councillor Schmidt. Oh, I just wondered if this is the total cost for that equipment?
For this particular piece, it is.
Right.
It was the estimate that we got from the contractor that would be doing this work.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who hasn't talked yet, that wants to go? Councillor Baumgartner, and then back to Saperi.
I noticed a glaring omission on the memorandum in terms of some of the surrounding police communities. It didn't include our two other police departments within the town, the city of Groton and Groton-Long Point. Are they currently a part of that, that system as well?
Yeah, Groton-Long Point uses our radio system, so they, when they transmit, they're on our radio system. The city of Groton is not.
And is, to your knowledge, do you know if the city at all applied for the grant, or was it a grant application that...
This was specific, you know, I requested this. Every community that's part of the emergency planning zone does have the opportunity to submit projects for pool funding. They could submit it for something else. It doesn't have to be about radio stuff, but like I said, this particular project from our folks, our representatives at DEMIS told me this is the type of project they like to fund because it maximized benefit to several entities. I mean, we're going to be able to communicate with a host of different agencies, so it hit the mark of what they were looking for for this funding.
So it would certainly enhance public safety for the town as well if the city joined in the system?
As well.
Great.
Councillor Ober. Oh, I'm sorry, I promised to go back to Saperi.
Are you aware of anything else that we're going to need to put out additional funds for in the, to implement the system that we...
No, it's going to be an expensive endeavor, and I think I was pretty clear with the council on that in the first place, that it's going to be, you know, a million dollars, a lot of money. When we get into it, we're probably, we may expect to find other problems or other issues that need to be addressed, or it's...
But have you identified any at this time?
Well, we've identified a lot as a result of a lightning strike that was sustained in May. Some significant damage happened to our facility.
In addition to what we appropriated for before?
This is for the radio project?
Yes.
We've had a lot of different issues come up as a result of a lightning strike, and I think some of that will be covered by insurance.
Okay.
But just like anything, if you're, if you're building a house, you know, new construction, and you anticipate that you won't, you know, you don't have any ledge, but then you find ledge, you know, problems can come up.
I understand. I wanted to know if there are any problems that you're aware of now. There may be something that you're not aware of coming up, but I'm just wondering...
No, I'm not aware of any right now, councillor. And this, I just want to be really clear, this is a good thing, this grant is, I mean, this is money we would have had to spend, we would have had to find the money somewhere.
Councillor Ober.
I'm just trying to refresh my memory. It seemed to me that some part of what we talked about before, when we were working on your budget, was that the city and the town were working towards being able to communicate? And my understanding was that as these changes were made, we were going to be able to communicate with the city?
I, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the city. We will have a radio system that allows us to communicate with a host of different entities that, I think I explained, the city is on a different frequency than us. The radio system they have, I believe, suits their needs. We have some limited capabilities within our department that allow us to talk to them on some of the mobile and portable radios that we have, but they're, you know, they're different frequencies that we communicate on. We're on 800 megahertz, the city is on a different... We're on 800 megahertz, the city is on a different frequency.
Mr. Burt, did you want to add something?
No, it's by me, covered.
I'm going to have to go back and read my notes.
I can certainly expound upon that, but I think I was pretty clear at the time. I mean, we have a radio system and we're going to a radio system that's owned by the state of Connecticut. We'll be able to speak with them and all the other partners that are on that.
Right.
Just to add, the city doesn't have the gaps in coverage that we do. And their system that they use isn't the appropriate one for what we would want to do townwide. So, at this point, the city didn't need to go to the new system. It's always their choice at any point if they want to, but they don't have the issues we do.
I thought.
Sorry.
We had discussed the, it's probably not, you know, pertinent to this, but we had discussed the fact that like if something happens at Sneakers and there's a city policeman sitting up on in Conrad's Yard, they couldn't communicate to tell somebody to come down and help. And it was supposed to be that we were going to work towards not having that situation.
Oh, I commit to you and I have committed, I'll do everything that I can to do that, to make sure that we're able to commit and communicate, rather. In fact, that's why we bought some mobile and portable radios that we can have some limited communication.
Counsel Parker.
I think if we're going to discuss this and talk about the city radios, you need both the mayor and Chief Spellman here to discuss that issue. Let me finish, please, Counsel Ober. Before we discuss how we want to tie everything together, because I don't remember, I remember you mentioning that. I don't think that was a discussion during our deliberations at that time. So, I'm just trying to make sure we don't put our, say something without making sure we confirm with everybody else and.
If I may. And the other thing, just before it goes any further, that discussion really is not pertinent to this particular item because the town needs to do this item regardless of what happens between the two entities. So, the desire to get grant money, I think, is a good desire and I think we should follow through with that if we can and obtain this grant money and then definitely continue with discussing areas where there might be cost savings and more cooperation. Did you want to speak? Anybody who hasn't spoken yet want to?
If I may.
Go ahead, yes.
I'm not speaking for the city. I'm not saying anything in a derogatory manner about anybody. But there were clearly conversations about that when we were discussing what we were going to do here in the town. It was brought up as a concern. And so, I understand this may be different from this, but you're here. So, while you're here, I want to ask the question and I want to see how we move it forward. Because I, I think it's very, as I said, I'm not saying anything against the city, anything against the town. I want us all talking. And I think if we can in the future have a conversation, that's fine, but if somebody's here, I'm going to ask them a question.
That's fine, but we need to stick with business. So, is there any further discussion on the grant? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of alternative one, authorizing the police department to accept the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Thank you, chief. Are you also here for five D, the part-time?
I am.
So, this is, so we're down to Counsel Schmidt, five D on page twenty-one, please.
I move that we authorize the modifications to the part-time seasonal pay plan as requested. And the only thing I'm not sure of, is this chart, the changes, or is this the old rate?
Yes, ma'am, yep.
These are the changes.
It should have, usually, I don't see the one you have in front of you, but I assume that it has all the appropriate changes. If it has telecommunicators on it, then it will be.
It does, and supernumerary, right.
Counsel Schmidt recommended the resolution. Is there a second to her recommendation?
I'll second.
A move by Schmidt, seconded by Ober. Chief, would you like to address this, please?
Yes, for some time now, myself and Director Zagami have been working on a, trying to integrate some part-time folks into the dispatch center. In order to do that, we need to have a pay plan for them to work under. We currently have one part-time person that was an individual who was previously employed as a full-time dispatcher. They maintain their, their pay plan at the time because they had previously been a union member. We've looked at the potential of bringing some others onboard, but in order to do that, we need to have something to pay them with. So, what I did is I took the existing contract, kind of, kind of used that as a guide to shape the pay plan for new, new hires that would be part-time or per diem individuals. Fill in gaps to help out, cover, cover shifts when, when others aren't available.
How will this impact your overtime costs?
Conceivably, it should bring it down. Could have a, an impact in reducing some need to order folks in to fill gaps where people are on vacation. You know, we've, Directors Zagami and I have had a variety of discussions internally on how that would work. Right now, we did, back in December, we advertised for dispatchers. We put out a solicitation for full-time and part-time, so we do have individuals that have expressed interest in this position and have gone through the competitive process. So, we're at that point where we're capable of hiring at least one individual, but prior to doing that, we needed to put this in place.
Other questions for the chief? Counsel Baumgartner.
Sort of in light of this, has this sparked any conversations with surrounding municipalities about potentially regionalizing even further in terms of dispatch with, you know, our surrounding communities?
Sure, we currently do dispatch for the town of North Stonington, Groton-Long Point. Their police department gets dispatched through us as well as all the regional fire departments in Groton as well as those of North Stonington. Any discussions like that have been very cursory, but it could, you know, we could explore that in the future.
And do you think that could kind of close that gap right now in terms of finding folks?
Yeah, it could, but, but we have a collective bargaining agreement right now, so as far as how it would impact that, we'd have to make sure that we are, you know, scrupulously on the contract as it sits right now.
Counsel Zepari.
In approving this pay rate, we're approving a pay rate, not necessarily approving the filling of each of those positions. Am I correct? Is that the way you interpret this?
This, I believe this is just for the pay plan right now.
So, when you want to hire one or more temporaries in these positions, you're going to come back and talk to us again?
Yeah, I would put that through the town manager.
It is required in the policy, yes?
I'm sorry?
It is required to come to the council.
Counsel Ober.
By doing this, is there going to be any increase in your budget for your, you know, for your wages overall?
There shouldn't be. I mean, we planned for this in the budget process this year. We, if you look at the budget, you'll see there was part-time personnel costs. You know, we had anticipated hiring, you know, that was part of the budget process as well. So, this, this shouldn't have an adverse impact on that, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief or Mr. Burt? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of alternative one, which is to authorize the modification to the seasonal pay plan? Did you have a question, sorry?
No.
No, okay. All those in favor of alternative one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. And that brings us to five E, which is the noise ordinance, which the chief is also here for.
Can I ask a question on this page?
Sure.
On the part-time seasonal pay plan, that's what we're talking about, correct?
That's what we just voted on, yep. So, she's on page twenty-three, Mr. Burt, looking at the chart.
But my question is, we're only talking about your department. We're not talking about any of these others, correct?
Right, it's just those last two items on the list. Those remain in effect. Those were already established.
Okay, just clarifying, thank you.
Counsel Zepari, we're on page twenty-four for the noise ordinance, please.
I don't see a resolution here.
Actually, twenty-five, you could just read the alternative on page twenty-five that you would like to see us talk about.
Alternative, we have, we have a proposed noise abatement ordinance. Alternative one is to adopt the noise ordinance and alternative two is to do nothing and be more aggressive in using the existing creating a public disturbance citations. Additionally, utilize our community policing program to outreach to offending businesses. I move for alternative number one.
Is there a second for discussion purposes?
Second.
Okay, move by Zepari to adopt the noise ordinance, seconded by Heed, and now we need discussion. So, do we want to start with, let the chief address it? And then I know several counselors have comments about it as well and questions perhaps, if you would, please.
I'm prepared to answer any questions. I know that the council has struggled with this for some time, addressing the issues that come to your attention as well as the town manager or my attention when we deal with establishments or business throughout the town that garner some attention from their neighbors, maybe adverse attention because of noises after, after hours. But I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Counsel Franco, I believe.
So, what you're, as I'm reading this, suggests that you could use an alternative for the citation of creating a public disturbance with a fine up to $103. And this would also eliminate, if we had imposed an ordinance, would eliminate having to purchase decimal readers and maintain that equipment, certifying it, calibrating it, annual recertifications and training.
If we do, if we do enact, if the council chooses to enact an ordinance, then we would have, we'd need a way to enforce it. We'd need to have some ways of measuring the noise, making sure that that's calibrated, that our officers are trained to do it. You know, there is, it's not cost neutral. It will cost the department money to do that training, to buy that equipment, to do the manual calibrations. And then, you know, making sure that we deploy it at the right hours and we have people certified and capable of using it when their, when a noise complaint comes up. You know, I think our, our hope collectively is that we can mitigate these before it gets to any of that level, right, before it gets to the need for enforcement, either through an ordinance or through using state statute. You know, recently, myself, as well as Jonathan Reiner and a couple others have met to try and figure out ways to solve this and address this issue at a variety of places in town. And I think that collectively, we're hoping that by teaming up between the police department and his personnel, putting people out there where we know there's been an issue at those times of day where we've gotten complaints and maybe addressing it with the owners of the establishment, the managers, the people that work there. If in fact that works, then great. If it doesn't work, then there are current laws on, on the statute books that allow us to go out and take some enforcement action. What you refer to is, is creating a public disturbance, that's fifty-three A, one eighty-one is the breach of peace statute. It's a lesser offense of that. It's not an arrest. It's an infraction. It's similar to getting a speeding ticket. It's done on the same form. That can be used, you know, it's a pretty broad statute that allows our officers to enforce it.
So, if we did create an ordinance, do you know what the cost would be approximately or your guess?
It would be whatever the council sets, but I believe it's governed by state statute. It can't exceed a certain amount that's in statute.
No, I mean your cost to your department of what this would cost you.
You know, it, not down to the penny, but it would cost, you know, we'd have to get officers trained, obviously. It wouldn't, it would be cost prohibitive to get every officer trained because we'd have to get them certified on the equipment. So, bringing people in on overtime to do that. You know, purchasing the equipment, I, I don't know what the initial cost of that would be, but, you know, I would liken it to a radar set or a laser unit. We can't just field them. You know, you need to train people on how to use it. And then annually, we have to send it back to a laboratory where it gets scientifically measured. Because you're, you're enforcing a law with that piece of equipment, you need to make sure it's operating properly and that you can testify to it in its accuracy in court. So, there would be, you know, there'd be definitely some expense that we'd incur as a result.
Counsel Zepari.
We have, you know, I, I've been a proponent of this. We've had people come in when we first took these seats back in December. There were people who came in and said, and told us about their difficulty sleeping over the chapter one restaurant and bar in Mystic. And they pointed out to us at that time that there were twenty-seven complaints made to the police department and the police did not use existing legis, existing laws at that time to alleviate their distress. I think it's terrible when people can't sleep because someone else wants to play loud music. I mean, you have to, you have to keep it within reason. Additionally, I point out that I myself, when that came up, I was very interested in that. I bought a sound meter and I paid $20 for it. And I went down to chapter one on several nights with my sound meter and they didn't have, they weren't making any noise when I was there. So, I did not get a good reading on them, but I, I have had readings in my own kitchen where I have my television and when my hearing aids aren't in, I need it cranked up a bit, so. And I took readings in front of my son-in-law's band when they were playing at Sneakers and I think had any residential area been in the, people trying to sleep in the area, they'd have difficulty. The, currently, the bands, even the good ones like my son-in-law, are, are loud. And they're very loud and they do interfere with people's ability to sleep. And we have, especially in Mystic, there's a lot of mixture of commercial and residential use of the property. And I think we have, we have a duty to protect those people who live there. That's what we have a police department for. And I admit that this may be a small thing, nobody's being murdered, but being sleep deprived is, is a bad thing. And the noise levels have been shown to cause anxiety conditions and other health issues. So, I think, I really, I really feel very strongly that we should go ahead and put this noise ordinance into place. And it is a tool that will allow you to protect those people and to serve those people.
We're not dismissive, if I may respond, we're not dismissive of that at all. I've met personally with the owners of at least that establishment, among others, to discuss these issues and in most cases, been responsive, but you know, that isn't necessarily lasting. And we've certainly directed officers down there to address the issue. Most of the time, when our officers respond, the noise stops and then they start up another time.
Yeah, but the thing about it is that there were twenty-seven complaints and the police said their hands are tied because there wasn't an ordinance that they could enforce about it. Now, we're trying to give you the ordinance and I get the feeling that there are some people on staff who don't want it. But I, I think that we owe it to those people who have had to live through that, that mess of noise.
I should also point out, if, you know, if the, if the council decides to enact it, then we will, you know, we'll follow the law. We'll absolutely address it, but.
So, chief, just to, for clarification purposes, if there were, as Counsel Zepari is stating, twenty-some incidents, there were no creating a public disturbance tickets, if you will, issued at that time?
That is accurate.
So, my preference would be to hold off on the noise ordinance for now and encourage you to more vigorously go in there and start issuing these citations to people and see what kind of response we get. If, once the citations are issued and they're starting to pay these fines, perhaps things will change. And then if they don't, we could always go back in and adopt an ordinance later. But I would like to see what happens with you just enforcing the existing ordinances rather than adopting a whole new policy. Counsel Schmidt and then Baumgartner.
I just wondered if this was something that was possible all this time. I wonder why it has never been used before.
It, it's, it can be used, you know, clearly our, you know, we, you know, we market ourselves as community-oriented, that our department is community-oriented policing and that, that's typically not an enforcement, right? We try to mitigate problems before they get to the enforcement end. You know, we have, I've recently discussed this with one of our officers assigned to community policing to work on this project specifically. You know, in the past, it was, you know, subjective. An officer may go there and may determine that it wasn't a problem and that didn't meet the statutory requirements to take any enforcement action or maybe felt that it did, but, but used their discretion to not take enforcement action. I've also discussed this in this room with our supervisors not that long ago during a supervisory meeting to say, hey, listen, this is, this is a, this is an approach that we can undertake. We can certainly use the existing statutes when we need to. You know, it, it, it isn't always used for that. Like I said, it's a very liberal statute. It's used for a variety of different things, but, but it's something that, that we can consider in this particular case.
I just wondered, because they've always said we can do nothing because there is no ordinance and so you feel that you have to give them the tool that they need to be able to enforce that.
And I don't know who specifically said we can't do anything. I've never taken that approach. I've never taken that approach. I've never, you know, as the chief of the department, I don't, I don't condone that. There are many things that we can do. You know, and not all of it means enforcement. Not all of it means making an arrest or issuing a citation. You know, even were there to be an ordinance, officers could, could utilize their discretion and say, hey, listen, you know, I responded, you know, I did, I felt I could use the ordinance for enforcement, but chose not to for other mitigating reasons. They do have that discretion in order to decide whether it's appropriate to take the enforcement action or not.
So if there were an ordinance, they might not enforce it?
It's not a matter of, well, I mean, there's different ways to enforce it. I wouldn't say it's not enforcing. I mean, it's like, for instance, another example would be if an individual is speeding and an officer stops them. They still violated the law, but the officer may choose not to give a ticket. May decide, hey, listen, I, you know, the enforcement, the enforcement effort, the education effort was for them to change their, their, their driving habits. If they respond to a place where there's a lot of noise and they turn it down and they don't turn it back up and they respond, you know, that, that's still enforcement as well. They got that verbal warning, they did not continue with that behavior. Now, on the other hand, if they go down the street a little bit further and they're still speeding, the officer sees them again and stops them and says, hey, you got your break last time, here's the ticket. Same thing can happen here. Hey, we gave you a ticket an hour ago or last night or the night before? You know, that, you didn't, you didn't respond adequately. Was that, did I, did I address that concern?
I think so, yes.
We have Councilor Baumgartner, Heed, Parker and then Zepary. So Baumgartner.
So just to clarify, has it piloted the equipment to test the, the number of decibels emitted from those establishments?
No, we don't have the equipment. And, and I think, you know, what Councilor Zepary was referring to, he could go out and buy one. You know, our officers are going to have to testify it in court as to the accuracy. They're going to have to go before a judge, you know, if someone chooses, if we issue a citation on a, on a, on an infraction based on the town ordinance, you know, they can appeal to the superior court. They can choose to have their day in court and we'd have to have an officer testify to it.
And so is there any way the, the department could pilot the equipment without enforcing the ordinance to see if it, if it's within that range or outside of that range? I think it probably make far more sense to do that before.
Sure. We'd have to establish what the parameters are that is legally sufficient here, what the, what the top, you know, what the range is, and then we'd have to purchase the equipment. And that would be the way to pilot.
To your knowledge, do you know if there are any surrounding communities who have any existing noise ordinance that's similar to the, the requirements set out within this?
I believe Stonington has. I did talk to their chief, and I don't mean to speak for their chief, but he, they have yet to issue any enforcement action and he had, he voiced some concerns. I don't want to speak for him, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to share those concerns with you because they're his concerns and he articulated them to me, but I don't think it would be fair because I don't have the same depth of knowledge as to why it works or doesn't work in the community.
Okay, we're going to, Mr. Burt wanted to say something, then we'll go back into the line of councilors.
As the chief had said earlier, first of all, setting policies, obviously, the prerogative of the council, if I find it my job to point out some potential issues. One is Gary Schneider, the public works director, indicated that we could run astray in our operations through public works of some of this. We'd have to exempt out public works, but if we're to change the parameters in this, which I hate to do that because there could be garbage pickup, other things that private companies run into. I think there'd be a bit of a can of worms there. The equipment, when I've looked at other places, to get the level we're talking about, we're probably talking about $500 to $700 per piece of equipment, that range, that's what other communities have been buying, that will hold up in court and be accurate enough. And we're probably talking quite a few officers to cover everyone on duty at one time, every group to, we're probably talking quite a few of those. The Mystic Chamber president did indicate to me that the chamber, the Mystic Chamber would be against this ordinance. And then I hadn't known about that until recently. I didn't know about that, creating a public disturbance law in the state. And I was looking it up in the third, and when you look up that law, the third item for what falls under that is making unreasonable noise. So I like to use what the state already has in place to address things. The last thing is, I hate setting policy or ordinances based on one business. I think we're going to get into, I can't tell how many complaints I get for zoning, animal control, other things that have a root in neighbor disputes. They will be called to many places where two neighbors think it's going to be over the decimal level, just, you know, just because they're annoyed and it's, you know, they don't like it. They're going to be responding to many, I think you're going to be surprised how many of those calls I'll end up getting, but it's my two cents.
Thank you. Okay, so Heed, Parker, Franco and then back to Zepary.
Parker first.
You said you have the community police officer working on this. Did you change his hours so that he would be able to hear it?
He has, he has some flexibility, yes. In fact, I had him reach out to one of the individuals in zoning, so that the two of them were going to try and partner up and go out at the same hours a day. So it's kind of a two-pronged approach, not just the police department, but zoning, so they go out and they observe it at the same time and they, you know, they have the full
One other question. So that, does that mean they're working from like 11 to 7:00 in the morning or 11 to?
No, our, the way I've structured our community policing program is to give them flexibility in scheduling so that the officer has.
That didn't answer my question.
I'm sorry?
That didn't answer the question.
What's your question?
I mean, the hours, exact hours, when he's doing that type of noise complaint?
His exact hours are what's governed by the contract. The contract allows us to alternate some of his days in order to go out and conduct this. You know, clearly, it doesn't happen at 10 o'clock in the morning, so he's going to need to go out at night. And we are able to do that. Does that answer it?
No, but I'll talk to you later.
I'm unclear, then if you're.
I will talk to you later.
Okay.
So he, he is available to go out when people call at midnight and say?
Oh, not immediately, no. But what we're trying to do is, he's going to go out to the businesses with the members owning during the, the times that we've gotten calls that Councilor Zepary has referred to before. So try and target those times, similar time of the day of the week, so they can go out and they can, they can monitor it and maybe take a proactive approach to it.
He wanted to say something, then we'll go back to.
I was going to do the same thing, that we pulled records from the CAT system and it's two particular nights that almost every complaint is on. I think it was Saturday and Monday. For some reason, they have events on Monday nights, but so we'll focus on those times.
So, can I?
Yes.
Okay. So they're both going out together, so that means zoning's hours have been changed too? Is that okay with the department or their?
Yeah, it's not a permanent change. They, yeah, they'll go out for, you know, because it's really a short range of time you're really talking about. You know, you're probably talking going out from 11 to 2 or somewhere in that timeframe to hit it, you know, going into the time when their music's usually going and seeing if they're.
That's what I was asking for.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Heed and then Franco.
When I was on the city council, we had a similar question come up over noise ordinance and I think it was motorcycles, which disappear within seconds. And then a gentleman who's cutting his grass at the crack of dawn in the summer, which is like 4:30, 5:00 in the morning. By having the conversation, you find these other laws, these other practices and you raise expectations. And I think that's what you're implying, is that we don't necessarily need an ordinance at this time, but you change the expectations in the department, the police understanding of the conversations with the businesses, we work together and solve it without going down that road of having to legislate. But my question is, with the current legislation, state legislation that you're talking about, are there, this, this one defines daytime and nighttime hours, so I'm guessing that there would be some discussion on what's permissible at 5:00 in the morning versus 12:00 on a, on a Friday or 8:00 even on a school night?
Right. The officers are going to have to establish that in their report, right? If they, if they take enforcement action, they're going to have to say, here's why I responded, here's what I observed, here's what was reported to me. And kind of lay that out so that it establishes the probable cause that fits that statute. So, you know, I think the town manager read to you what, you know, excessive noise. What is excessive noise? It may be a bit subjective, that's why the officers got to be pretty descriptive in their report to say, hey, gotten multiple calls at this location, we've responded X amount of times, we've had neighbors that have complained about it for months. You know, we did speak with the management, they weren't responsive or they, you know, they responded, but yet tonight I went out there and I made this observation, clearly it was excessive, therefore I'm issuing an infraction for this particular reason.
One more. And then the fine is 100?
I think it's 103.
103, is that enough or?
We can't change that. That's the, that's, that's in the infraction schedule, it gets updated every October. So the state, you know, state infractions bureau sets that.
Thanks.
Councilor Franco.
I have a few questions. So for some reason, I recall something about if they're making public disturbance and people are maybe disabled or had medical issues nearby and they were disturbing them and it created other problems for them, can the fee go up higher?
No.
No? Okay. And then also, I do recall with Stonington, which is our neighbor, they have a noise ordinance which created quite the hurrah over the winter when they, people complained about CVS getting plowed in the middle of the night by contractors. And the whole town was in an uproar and it put people against people over what noise ordinance should be about and what it shouldn't be about. And it created major uproar, it was all over the newspapers. And it just, I just, I don't know. It's, I think there's too many things, if you look through this, that there could be problems with that, like John said, it could create problems within neighborhoods of people who may not get along. And I think there's other ways we can deal with it.
Back to Councilor Zepary.
You know, Chief, you said that there would be a problem with the noise meter, the sound meter. The, the, the police officer would have to go in and document that the sound meter had been calibrated and that it was accurate. And you want to replace that with a, with a system where the police officer walks by a place and he says, hmm, that sounds too loud to me. How do you think that's going to go over in court? Do you think a good defense attorney is going to raise hell with him?
Well, I'm sure that a good defense attorney will raise it on either case.
Well, no, I think if you've got a sound meter and you take care of it, then you can say, say it was excessive noise. Furthermore, the, the limits that we set are 45 and 55 decibel. I don't think anybody's going to raise too much cane if somebody's got a 58 decibel sound coming out. But if they've got an 80 decibel sound coming out that reads on that, and then the defense attorney goes and say, well, your machine is off by five decibels. Well, so what? It's still in excess of the, of the, and I think that's why, when you get on the highway, the state troopers don't stop you unless you go on, what is it, 75 or 80 now?
Having, having spent 22 years in the state police, I don't know any rule that applied to us that said you only stop over, you know, X amount of, if you violate the law, you violate the law. There's no magic number.
Having operated on a number of state police officers, I've had them tell me, you keep it at, when the limit was 55, they say, keep it at 70 or below and nobody will bother you. And, and so at any rate, I know you've been in the state police, but generally, there is an unwritten rule. They don't bother people when they're close to the line. Yeah. They don't bother people when they're close to the line, it's when they're appreciably over. And I think the equipment, even if it's not highly calibrated, is going to identify the people who are appreciably over. I also would point out that this, this ordinance was run by, was run by our council, who recommended that we not rely on this more subjective standard, but have the, I think it's in, in the material that was sent to us. Council recommended that we, we follow.
For consideration. We asked, we asked the manager to draft something for our consideration, so that's what we're considering at this evening. Councilor Ober, you're the only one who hasn't spoken. Did you want to add anything?
I'd just like to add that if we run into these problems again, I would really like you to come and talk to us, not necessarily have to, we need to get complaints from the neighbors. If you're seeing an excessive situation, and the fine may only be $150 or, it is $150, but you know, if a bar's making a lot of money, $150 isn't going to even impact what they do or they don't do. So I'm, I'm inclined to allow you to, you know, to go forward with what you feel is best, but I want to really see it enforced. And I want, you know, if it's loud, a police officer should be able to walk in there and shut it down.
And they have, they have. At some establishments, I can't cite, you know, exact times or dates, but it does happen.
I know we're always trying to create a good balance between those that are coming to Mystic to have a good time and those that are living there. And I think if the owners of the establishments understand that the police mean it when they say enough, it'll, it'll soon resolve itself. Because as I say, the fines aren't going to make any difference. So I'd just like to see some, some, how is the wrong word to use? But I'd like to see some impact behind what we do to try to make that balance be, be good. And, and so I wish I could feel that I've seen by what you've done, that these things were already in place and you were really using them. I, I'm not able to see that.
Right, I think, I would tend to agree. I would think that none of us would be discussing this issue right now if, if the mechanisms in place had, you know, convinced certain entities that maybe they, they need to be more respectful of their neighbors. And that, that doesn't, that's not exclusive to the police department. I know there's other agencies in town that have, you know, weighed in on this issue and tried to convince some, some individuals that there's, there's been some complaints, there's been some concerns from neighbors. And just, just out of, you know, common decency to make sure that your neighbors are maintaining a good relationship and respected, that, that, you know, that should be, be, you know, something they consider. But I know you also, you, you struggle with the fact that, you know, we want business, we want development, we, you know, everybody appreciates Mystic, it's the crown jewel of Connecticut, right? So we have that, but we struggle with trying to make sure people that live down there don't, don't, you know, have undue distractions.
So we have, we have alternative one on the floor and everybody's had a chance to, to speak their mind on alternative one. Are you still going?
I was.
All right, go ahead.
As a courtesy to you, I will stop.
Does anyone else want to continue the discussion on alternative one?
I want to hear what Lynn has to say.
I do too. Please go. I thought you were finished.
No, that's okay. I just, I just really don't want this to be an issue this year. I absolutely agree that, you know, we, it is a precarious position that you're in. But I think the important thing are the people that are with us year-round. And we have to be very aware of the people that pay the taxes to keep Mystic moving. And, and at the same time, I want the establishments to be successful, but not at the cost of somebody else's, this pleasure. That's what I have to say. Thank you. Thank you.
So all those in favor of alternative one, which is the motion on the floor to adopt the noise ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Could you raise your hands, please, so I can write? So Zepary and Schmidt, opposed? Okay, so it fails 2 to 6 to 0. So then I will move for alternative two, which is to do nothing but be more aggressive in using existing, creating a public disturbance citations and utilizing our community policing program to do outreach to offending businesses. Is there a second? Second. Move by, alternative two moved by Granatowski, seconded by Obray. I'm assuming we don't have any further discussion on alternative two since we all discussed prior, so all those in favor of alternative two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
6 to opposed, Zepary and Schmidt. And any abstentions? Zero. Okay, so we're recommending alternative two on the noise ordinance. Thank you. So we are on to 5F and I think we're back to Councilor Baumgartner. And this is 7/20/18, one adoption of an ordinance to establish hours of operation for BYOB establishments. And this is on page 32.
So I make a motion to recommend the adoption of an ordinance to establish hours of operation for BYOB establishments.
Second. Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Franco. Since we've all discussed this before, I think I'm just going to go straight to the councilors, or we'll start with Mr. Burt and then we can all just chime in because I think we've had time to discuss this. And Mr. Burt has some information from the attorney, I believe.
Yeah, I was asked to look at two items. And one thing was to run things by the police chief. Changing the times from 11:00 PM to 11:00 AM to, I believe it was 12:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And then no gambling, lotteries and/or gambling devices, that 4B. We talked about exempting out charitable organizations. The attorney thought that could be a constitutional challenge. He recommended striking 4B completely out of the ordinance. And also, I ran that by the police chief, who, as far as I know, didn't have an issue with it.
Okay, so the attorney recommended striking 4B.
Correct. Correct.
And, um, we had talked about changing the times from 12:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
Right.
And that was in 4A. Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to add before I open up the floor for counsel?
That was it.
Okay. Um, anybody want to discuss this now? Anything further that we have? Did you want to talk? No?
No, I'm good. I'm, I would like to pass this, so.
So would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion to go with.
Oh, we already did that, I'm sorry. Baumgartner, Franco.
To adopt alternative one.
Yeah, we did that, sorry. I forgot. Andre did, of course.
You would need to amend it, I think.
Amended.
Oh, all right. That's what you can do, Counselor Franco, you can amend it.
I'd like to make amendment on 4A, changing the time to 12:00 AM to, and 10:00 AM, and then striking out 4B.
Second.
Okay. So then we would be voting on, uh, adopting the ordinance with the two amendments to section four, 4A and 4B. Is there a discussion on the amended ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the hours of operation for BYOB establishments with the amendments to 4A and 4B, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, so class unanimously. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, this is immediate?
Um, it goes to the RTM and they have to, their, their only action is to veto within 45 days.
Once it goes through the council, I mean.
Okay. Yes.
Was that the vote on the amendment?
That was the vote on adopting.
The vote on that whole thing, right?
Yeah, I need to vote on the motion as amended.
No, I thought, I thought we were voting on the motion as amended. We can, we can run it again if you'd like, but that's what the, the intention was, we were adopting the ordinance with the amendments to 4A and 4B. Was that what you all intended?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Would you like us to do it again? We can do it again if it's cleaner.
Typically when you amend a motion, you vote first on the amendment and then you vote on the original motion as amended. It's typically two votes when you don't amend it, unless you do something like the, the first motion is withdrawn and then you just do a completely new motion.
All right, so to make it clean, I will move, um, the establishment, I recommend the adoption of an ordinance to establish hours of operation for BYOB as amended? Is that sufficient?
Second.
Okay. So Granatowski, Parker, all those in favor of the ordinance as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Okay, so that's, that's good then. Ms. Brezina, yes?
Yes.
We're good. Okay, and then this goes to the town council, we voted, then it goes to the RTM. Thank you, Chief.
New temporary position for a discussion.
We've, we've gone through that already.
We approved the pay rate, but we didn't approve the position.
Right. That's not on the agenda this evening. It's not on our schedule here unless you want to add it.
No, it's not on the schedule.
Okay.
Would that likely be on the 24th, do you think? That'll possibly be ready for the 24th.
Okay.
So then we are on to 5G. Um, Counselor Parker, 2018-41 miscellaneous and ad hoc committee appointment.
I make the motion to recommend a resolution that Council Andre Baumgartner be appointed to the Southeast Area Transit Seat Board.
So.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. All those in favor of Counselor Baumgartner filling the seat positions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, so move unanimously. Um, if you have agenda items, is there anything we needed to review, Mr. Burt?
No.
Okay. Other business, um, I would just like to get consensus. As I understand it, Counselors Zepari, was it your intention to resign from the cable TV advisory board?
Yes.
Okay, so Counselors Zepari is resigning and we had a recommendation, um, or request to fill the seat with, um, Jim Loughlin, who was a, was an RTM member, and I would like to appoint him, but I wanted to get input from the council. Is there any input from the council on this? Any objection to seating Mr. Loughlin?
I don't know anything about him.
Okay. Um, so are you all in favor of seating Mr. Loughlin on the cable TV advisory board?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, so that's unanimous as well.
Something about, you know.
Jim was an RTM member. I don't know if he's currently serving.
He was already serving on the cable advisory. We mistaken and he took him off.
Oh, okay.
And he called me in and asked to be put back on because he attends all the meetings.
And Counselors Zepari offered to open up a seat by resigning because he's otherwise occupied.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, is there any other business to come before the committee of call?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Parker.
I had something I wanted to ask for if I could.
Would you like to withdraw your motion?
I withdraw mine.
Would you withdraw your motion, Counselor Parker?
I withdraw.
Thank you, Counselor Parker and Franco.
I know you're on ready to go and I'm ready to.
Counselor Obray.
I just wanted to ask for clarification. I believe, I had asked, I thought John was gonna be here this evening, we're gonna have some discussion about.
That's the 24th.
Okay, so he will be here for the 24th?
Both John and Tom Zanarelli, well, John Reiner and Tom Zanarelli will be here on the 24th.
Okay.
To discuss the blight ordinance.
Okay, if everybody could please read that before we have that meeting, because I think it's kind of important that we, uh.
I sent that out, didn't I?
Yeah, yeah.
Tell me if you need it resented.
Thank you.
It's been a while. I'll resend it just in case.
Okay, kid.
And Mr. Fitzgerald, we have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Fitzgerald as well because he's sending information to us to help us out at that meeting that we have scheduled on the 26th, I believe.
Yes.
Counselor Parker.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. We are adjourned.